Hello, everyone.
Hey, Tim.
Hey, Tim, how are you?
Tim, can't see you.
I'm good, thanks.
Just give it a minute for Andy to come down. Welcome to the special board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Thursday, May 21, 2020. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustees, please be reminded to turn off your microphone and cameras on your devices until you are recognized to speak. In order to be recognized to speak, please type "hand up" in the chat box. Once you have been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. For tonight, I will request Trustee Murphy to assist me in case I need to hand the gavel over. Trustee Swan, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Certainly. Please show me the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Merciful God, here are fervent prayers for all who suffer from the coronavirus. May those who are infected receive the proper treatment in the comfort of your healing presence. May their caregivers, families, and neighbors be shielded from this virus. Give solace to those who grieve the loss of their loved ones. Protect and guide those who strive to find a cure, that their work may conquer the disease and restore communities to their wholeness and health. Help us to rise above fear. We ask all this in the name of your Son, Jesus, in your Holy Spirit, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Could you please show me the... Oh, Canada.
I affirm that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to her majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of Canada, her heirs and successors, and that I will faithfully observe the laws of Canada and fulfill my duties as a Canadian citizen. Approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move it.
Trustee Zarnata, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Sorry, I didn't get the seconded.
It's Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew. All in favor? Do I take a recorded vote or just anybody opposed? So I take it all in favor? The motion carries.
In favor.
The motion carries. Declaration of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we shall move on to item four, information item. Upgrade to boardroom technology, Superintendent Law.
Thank you through, Mr. Chair. In front of you will see the report that has been put together by staff. As per the trustee motion, staff investigated improvements to the boardroom technology based on specifications outlined in the motion, with a cost range between $100,000 and $150,000. One thing I'd like to mention and to draw attention to is where it does say it says staff to operate the system under the area that says additional cost. This is actually not a new position. So this is essentially the time it would take, we would require a staff member to work late in the day of board meetings to operate, to help operate the system. Now, one thing I'd like to suggest maybe is putting together a staff working group, which kind of could help to look at what the actual specifications are. Trustee would be welcome to sit on that working group to assist in really kind of deciding what we need with respect to technology. As we were looking through this, there was quite a range of options available to us. Now, Senior Manager Bill Cripps of Information Technology is also on the line, and he could help with any kind of specific questions relating to any of the quotes that he received. If there's any questions or comments?
Is Mr. Cripps going to be talking?
Yes, Senior Manager Cripps is available. Bill, are you there?
Does Bill have anything to say?
Bill, is there anything further to add?
No, through, I guess, to you, Mr. Chair, I have nothing to add, but I'm free to answer any questions that everyone has on this.
Thank you. We shall take trustee questions. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Cripps. We're all getting more comfortable with Zoom and video conferencing platforms, and we have the visual monitors in our boardroom. Is there something that's easy enough to incorporate when somebody is not able to attend the meeting to somehow split the screen and use Zoom or some other video conferencing platform, which would seem to be relatively inexpensive?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The simple answer is not easily. Unfortunately, due to the layout of the room right now, it does become a little bit challenging based upon the system that is there now and integrating it into, I'm going to call them, modernized video conferencing technologies. We have tried it in the past, and I believe many trustees and staff have seen the type of hurdles and hiccups we start to expose when we integrate these two types of systems together. I'm not saying it's impossible, but that would be a matter of sort of bringing in additional parties who are experts in this field to, in a way, provide us another option in looking at, I call it, video conferencing the room. And then from there, we sort of look at the expectations of trustees who want to then sort of use a full video conferencing package to identify themselves and others, whether it be on TVs or other display screens in front of them.
Trustee Murphy, do you have any further questions, a follow-up question?
No, I guess that leads to Superintendent Loft's point that really we do need a staff working committee to find out what really, to narrow down what our wants and needs are. So I would be willing to sit on that committee.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Let's move on to Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Guzzo. We move to trustee Zarnata.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Loft. So the technology in the boardroom and video conferencing, I think, is important. I guess I just want to ask a question, and you may not be able to answer it, but the estimates between $100,000 and $150,000, do we foresee any of that money that we would spend on this coming out of the classroom?
I would not necessarily know. We would have to... Would it come directly out of the classroom? It would become, basically, would come out of board administration because it's an administrative expense. So that's where it would come out of.
So when we decide to move ahead, just to follow up through you, Mr. Chair, if that's okay? We just have to be careful that, you know, this is a, is this a need or is this a want? And where is this money going to come from? Or do we have to offset it by something else that may be negative?
What happens when we start doing the estimates? When we get the GSNs, we'd have to factor something like that into the equation to see what the actual cost would be and then bring it forward.
Thank you.
Trustee Zarnata, any more questions, follow-up? Is good? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to trustee Agnew.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering, and maybe it's hearsay, but I keep trying to scroll, but obviously I don't have control of the scroll. Is this something that could be relocated if we were ever to build something new or have a different CEC? Would we be able to take this system with us? Or would we be looking at needing to get an entirely new system should we ever have a new building?
Superintendent Loft, do you want to pass it to Mr. Cripps?
Certainly, yeah. Maybe I'll start and then I'll let Mr. Cripps fill in. The majority of the costs, unfortunately, would be tied to this building, and it was a lot of construction and allocations of wires and items like that that are actually fixed costs for us. You're correct, we could move some of it, but unfortunately not as much as we had hoped. Mr. Cripps, if you're available to fill in any gaps that I may have left?
Through you, Mr. Chair, you've hit the nail right on the head, Mr. Loft. A lot of the solution would be bolted onto the wall, but the labor costs, wiring costs, and other, I call them miscellaneous costs that are very difficult to move, just wouldn't really be movable. And in looking at sort of other options to a new facility, the actual dimensions, acoustic, and design of a, let's call it a future boardroom may even change in which you would look at an entirely different solution altogether.
Thank you. And Mr. Cripps, any questions, trustees?
I just have a follow-up, Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm wondering, looking through this, and I understand that, you know, this was a total, an estimate to, and again, this is probably back to what trustee Murphy is suggesting that we would need to have a committee to determine exactly what our wants and needs are because I'm wondering if there is some sort of hybrid model available, something that would provide us with more than we have now, which we know we are technologically challenged if we are trying to run any type of virtual meeting out of that boardroom, but, you know, not one that has so much cost to it. So I would be interested in seeing if there was some sort of hybrid model that we could utilize.
Superintendent Loft?
Yeah, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I agree, trustee Agnew, with, I think, to get the, putting a committee together to see exactly what our real needs are, our real wants are, and then kind of been able to dissect that and find the best solution for our current situation. When we put this together, we are going off the requests that were in the motion. And as we found out, some of those were higher than maybe everyone anticipated the cost to be. So I think having that working group put together would definitely help to kind of streamline what we're really looking for, what we really need.
Great, thank you.
Trustee, any more questions? Before we move on, I just want to make one comment if I'm allowed to. I think the motion was for upgrading the current system, and I think the numbers provided up for buying a new system. So I think, Superintendent Loft, this is a great idea to put together the working committee or whatever you call it. But do you have any timelines for setting up this committee?
Unfortunately, at this moment, oh, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, it's difficult. We found it very difficult to get people to come in to actually give us a quote. I think Mr. Cripps had at least one vendor that was able to take a look at the building, but a lot of them were done remotely or looking at just measurements and such without really getting in there. That's the problem that we're finding right now, is trying to get people into the building. Possibly over the summer, there might be some opportunity once things start opening up a little bit more to really get something more concrete in place. I'm sorry, I don't have a better answer at this point in time. We can definitely start going. I think, and Mr. Cripps can back me up on this if I'm incorrect, but we could get together and at least start looking at the specs that we want. So we have an idea on the pricing at least now, what things are going to cost. The actual final price won't be able to be determined until we get into the boardroom, but at least we can have an idea what we're looking for and what the cost options are and such. So that is something that we could probably put together sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Superintendent Loft. Do you have any more questions, Chair? Sorry, who's that, sorry?
Mr. Chair, just to...
Okay, Mr. Cripps, go ahead.
So through you, Mr. Chair. As part of this too, we are finding that a lot of staff who would also sit on this staff working committee are very busy right now in sort of working with this work-from-home experience as well that would make a lot of attending a situation like this a little bit challenging right now. I do believe that starting in sort of our September timelines would be a good time for this just because it would give staff the ability to, while they're also used to the video conferencing experience right now, also be able to sort of put together some good thought on what modernized solutions now truly look like as they become more exposed to this technology.
Thank you, Mr. Cripps. So let's help keep the conversation going. And if nobody has anything else to say, we shall move on to the next item. Item 4.2, extended school closure and distance learning, Secretary Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just going to try and share my screen here, so just give me a second.
We have IT available, Secretary Daly.
Just give me a second. That's the old one.
Yep, looks good.
Can't hear you, Secretary Daly. Are you muted? You're muted. Secretary Daly, you're muted. Okay. You're still muted.
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, it's just, that's the last presentation. So if you just give me a minute.
Okay.
Begin, and I'm going to get the correct presentation up. Sorry about that, folks. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Thank you. Purpose of this report is to give you an update since we last met as a board. So it's a little bit of looking back to look forward, and then maybe, probably more importantly, where we're going over the next six weeks and then into September. So it's going to be a little bit of background. And also, it's going to highlight a couple of departments or areas of departments that we probably haven't really looked at over the last couple of, the last couple of meetings. So as everybody's aware, we've been in an extended school closure since just prior to March break, and now the closure's been extended throughout the rest of our school year. So I want to talk a little bit tonight about what's happened since the last update, where we're at right now, the remainder of this school year, some comments on plans for summer learning, and then preparing to get started for reentry in September. So throughout this period, trustees will recall that we really had, and still have, three overarching goals, and that's to consider the health and wellbeing of our students, our staff, and our families, to provide continuity of learning for students that's flexible and accessible, and also to provide the supports to staff that they need in order to support our students and to grow in their own practice. So first of all, in terms of some of the supports for our students, our social workers and our child and youth counselors continue to support students and families, over 400 students since the beginning of our extended closure period. They've taken on over 50 new families and doing this all virtually and having to change their processes to a virtual environment. You'll also recall that during Catholic Education Week, it was also Mental Health Week. So we had some supports for schools and families during Mental Health Week and shared that information via our Twitter feed, and they continue to add resources and mental health tips to our Learn at Home website. Our system chaplain, our school chaplaincy leaders, our principals, our faith animators at our school level, continue to provide resources and supports around Catholic faith resources. Again, we saw that highlighted during Catholic Education Week, but for many of you either at the elementary schools, maybe in your areas, or certainly we've seen our high school chaplains and our system chaplain leader posting lots of good things over the course of the last several weeks. We had an opportunity to celebrate Mass both provincially with the Archdevises of Toronto and more locally with our own bishop during Catholic Education Week. In terms of some of our community resources, you'll recall from our last board meeting that Halton Food for Thought was generous in a $20,000 donation, which we were able to purchase gift cards, grocery gift cards. Those have all been distributed to families in need across our board. There's also been kind of individual food drives that have gone on throughout the board. Vice Chair Dwork's been involved in some of them up in Milton, some food drives at St. Benedict's School. There's actually a food drive going on today coordinated by some of our pathway staff. So some of those are kind of rising up just kind of organically. In terms of supporting our students since our last update, our psychology department, in addition to doing the prep or the work that they would normally be doing in order to get ready for next year, they've also been, again, operating in a virtual environment. So they've been supporting families, they've been supporting staff, both in students with some short-term interventions. We have, one of the processes that we did have to put in place was to retrieve some documentation from our elementary school so we can continue with our assessment process, and we're following up with our secondary schools next week as well. A couple of areas that we haven't talked about specifically, I don't think, over the last few weeks, but trustees are aware that we do have deaf and hard-of-hearing itinerants that support a specific group of students and families. So they've been supporting those families as they always do, but more specifically in a kind of a virtual environment, being able to provide transcription and captioning for instructional videos that teachers may be posting. In addition to that, they're starting to work towards next year so to transition our new students in and also to start the process of organizing servicing equipment for next year. Similar to our blind and low-vision support, they've been creating and translating Braille materials, having online sessions with students, starting to transition support for the students that will be receiving next year and providing support with consultations with parents. Again, our speech and language and communicative disorders assistants have been really busy, and the numbers kind of speak for themselves in terms of the hundreds of online therapy sessions they've been able to provide, the hundreds of coaching sessions with parents and teacher consultations. So while we're proud of all the work, all of our staff has done. Certainly, our support staff in many different areas, they've worked really hard to transition to this new environment and have been a tremendous asset to support our classroom teachers. Our behavior analysts have been supporting students either directly or indirectly. They've been posting resources on the Learn at Home website. They've been providing lots of professional developments for some of our staff as well. One of the groups we're really proud of, again, we're proud of all the work that our staff's been doing, but our educational assistants have really stepped up to the plate in terms of participating in live streaming sessions with students and providing direct contact support with hundreds of students with doing prerecord... with doing prerecorded activities and messages either in conjunction with the school cert or with classroom teachers. So kudos to the work of our Spec Ed department in general and certainly to our educational assistants and our EA managers. Trustees that are aware of the assistive technology that many of our students access would be familiar with the relationship we have with LearnStyle. It's been a really excellent partnership over the last several years. And LearnStyle's been ever been able to provide some virtual coaching to students and parents since the March break. Again, that's been in conjunction with our certs. Part of it's been a bit of triage, enabling support for students and parents to help with some of that tech support, but also to continue training with the students that had been ongoing prior to our extended school closure. So again, that's been a really great partnership we've had with LearnStyle, and we're glad that's been able to continue. In terms of the resources to staff, Curriculum Services is continually and continuing to support staff kind of on a big picture in general terms, but also when there's specific requests either from the teacher level or from the school level, they've been able to provide specific supports based on individual school and even individual teacher needs, and that continues to go on. In terms of some of the other supports we've had for staff, our educational assistants, in addition to the work they've done directly with our students, have participated in a number of PD sessions. CEDAs have been able to provide some equity in inclusive education distance learning PD to over three hundred of our staff. And we try to continue to support our school administrators through social work and CYC support so that they can support their families and their schools. We continue to meet weekly with school administrators on Thursdays with our senior staff. And then obviously, family school superintendents or other superintendents would meet with schools as needed. As I said, Curriculum Services continues to support our administrators by developing monitoring templates, by developing PD that teachers and schools can access. And we continue to update the communications toolkit for our school administrators with sample messaging that they can share with their parents that are unique to their particular school needs. So that's kind of where we've been. So if we think about where we started back in March and the phases that we're talking about here, we hear about phases in terms of the province opening. This doesn't really line up with the provincial phases, but right now, we're kind of in this Phase Two of our extended closure, and this will take us to the end of the school year. And then Phase Three will really start up when we come back in September, when we reopen. And while it says there, "Phase Reentry: Blend of In-Class and Distance Learning", we're really not sure what that September reopening will look like quite yet. Ultimately, obviously, we wanna get back to our schools being open full-time with in-class instruction, with everybody being there. That's what everybody wants. But that's a little bit undetermined at this point. I'll speak to that a little bit more as we proceed. So this Phase Two learning really kind of kicked off April sixth when we moved from kind of provincially-supported curriculum to teacher-led instruction. The province did provide us with some specific guidelines around areas of focus, number of hours of instruction. And we continue to use those guidelines. They really haven't changed. Again, when we started out, our role or our view, sorry, of distance learning was something that was flexible, that it could be done at any point in the day, that it didn't necessarily require online access all of the time, and that hopefully, the work that was provided for students would require minimal parent and guardian support. And I think we talked about this at our last meeting, that that was something we had to kind of navigate in the early weeks to get a sense of certainly what was, for the most part, feedback was probably overwhelming amounts of work as opposed to the the other end of the spectrum. But I think our teachers have worked really hard with the support of their administrators to get a better balance. As we're moving forward in this period, we're really now, because this has been an extended closure. It's not a two-week, "Let's keep the learning going and we'll all be back". This has now been really a six-week period and another six weeks to come. So our focus now is to successfully complete the school year, to best prepare our students to advance to their next grade, for our high school students to earn their credits, and for both our Grade Eights and our Grade Twelves to graduate either to high school or on to post-secondary or the workplace. So from a high school context, just wanted to highlight a little bit of the work that our Pathways team has done. Because we've got a number of different programs in our high schools that really rely on kind of hands-on or active learning, we've really had to make some changes there. So for our specialist high schools majors programs, there's an element of kind of classwork involved in that, but there's also certifications that students have to require. Typically, we would partner with lots of different industries in order to provide some of those certifications. We've had to move those into an online format. Many of our students at the high school are involved in co-op placements. Those placements, obviously, those face-to-face placements couldn't continue. So we've been providing support through virtual conferences, virtual learning opportunities. If you followed the Pathways feed on Twitter at all, or even many of our high schools, they've highlighted many of those programs over the last several weeks. We do have partnerships with a number of our local colleges where students are in dual-credit courses. A dual-credit course is where a student completes a high school credit and at the same time gains a community college credit. So we have students continuing to participate in fourteen different dual-credit programs through Humber, Sheridan, and Mohawk. In terms of planning forward to next year, our high school or secondary school guidance counselors have been reaching out to students around program planning, option sheets. I think I mentioned at the last board meeting, or it might have been one of the updates I provided to trustees. This would be the point in the year where our high schools are starting to schedule for next year, where students are registering. So for our own students, that registration process has been well underway. But for students new to the board, obviously with schools closed, that's been a bit of an impediment. So we did open an online registration process for our secondary schools, and that process is going well. So our schools are starting to build their timetables for next year. So that kind of takes us to, I guess, Tuesday. Because this past Tuesday, we do know that the minister and the government made an announcement that schools would remain closed to students for the remainder of the school year. So our priorities now, while those overarching priorities remain the same for the next roughly six weeks, our priorities are to support our teachers so they can continue to engage our students in their learning for the remainder of the year. We are looking at ways that we can celebrate, commemorate our Grade Eight and Grade Twelve graduations in a virtual way because we do realize that those are important milestones for our students. They're important milestones for families, for our teachers, for our school communities. Our students have missed out a lot in that respect. And certainly for our high school students and our elementary students, field trips and end-of-year celebrations and all those kind of things that go with, you know, the good weather happening in the spring and all those sorts of things they are missing out on. So we are cognizant of that and planning to mark those special occasions before we close for the school year. Many parents, I'm sure, are asking questions of trustees, because I know the questions have come to us as well, around what's the process now for being able to pick up things that students may have left in their desks or in their lockers. Teachers are asking those same questions. So we're working through that process with our public health officials. The ministry did let us know this morning on a call with the deputy minister that they're also working on a template to ensure kind of safe access back into the schools. So we do have to wait a little bit for their input. I'm pretty confident that the plans we have in place already will meet all of those requirements. But those templates are coming shortly. We'd already been in the preparation for our summer learning programs. And we're also looking at where we're going for September of 2020. So I just wanna talk a little bit about summer learning because some additional information did come out from the ministry on Tuesday. And literally, came out on Tuesday, so we've had two days to kind of look at it. So what we had already in place, we'd already set up the registration process for what I guess I'll call our traditional secondary school summer credits. We're fortunate that over the last number of years, the secondary school online credit option has become very popular. And in fact, I believe last year we had more students gain secondary credits in the summer online than they did face-to-face. So that process is well underway. We're anticipating an increased demand for students that are gonna take full new credits over the summer, so we're preparing for that. We've, over the last number of years, run kind of a transitional numeracy program for students entering Grade Seven, Eight, and Nine. So that process was underway as well. What we were waiting for from the ministry, as they talked about some of the new summer learning programs that they were gonna develop, was exactly what those programs would be. We kind of had an idea or theorized a little bit what some of them might be, and it turns out that for some of them, we had a pretty good idea. It's a little bit of a step back to some processes we've had in the past. So the ministry is allowing, encouraging boards to offer upgrade credits, so they would be fifty-five hours of instruction. So a full credit's a hundred and ten hours of instruction. Fifty-five hours of instruction where students could potentially upgrade their marks. We used to do, we had a really fulsome upgrade summer school program for a number of years. Actually, it was so long ago that I actually taught it a number of summers. There was no online version back then, I can assure you, but we got away from that under ministry direction a number of years ago. But I think under this special circumstance, the ministry and boards have recognized that it might be a good opportunity for students who maybe weren't able to maintain a good connection with the curriculum over the second half of the semester, that they'll be able to build some of those skills or fill some gaps in a two-week session. So that'll be coming up next in terms of our registration process. The other option, and it's one that we haven't offered in our board, but we will for this summer, is credit recovery. So credit recovery is something that we typically offer in our day schools, where students who maybe are just shy of having enough work completed, or I shouldn't say work completed, I think more accurately, may be missing demonstration of some overarching skills in a particular class. So they've done much of the work, but they need to just go a couple of steps further. Our teachers, our high school teachers, when students are in that situation, they develop kind of a credit recovery plan for them. And we typically run that during the school year, but we'll be offering credit recovery for students in order, if a student didn't gain their credit because they didn't complete the requirements, that they would be able to complete those requirements. So how's that different than the two-week upgrade? A student might not need two weeks to complete that requirement. It might be a couple of major assessments or an assessment or two that they weren't able to complete. So that's a little bit more of a kind of an individualized program. And our students will come to us with a credit counseling or a credit review sheet from their classroom teacher, and that will help the summer school teacher plan for them to be able to get them up to speed and to be able to make sure that they've completed the necessary requirements in order to gain a credit. So there was also some of the information with regards to summer school programming. The ministry has made a commitment of some additional funding, undetermined at this point, so we're waiting for the details on that. Some additional funding where we could provide support for students with special needs through EA or CERT support during the summer. So we're looking forward to getting some more details on that and then be able to plan with a little bit more specifics around what that support might look like. I know Superintendent Sabriano has met with the Spec Ed team, and he was on a call today with superintendents from Spec Ed departments through our Catholic boards today. So we're still kind of unraveling that a little bit and waiting for some additional details. But we're looking forward to be able to support those additional supports as well. Couple of other things that we'd already decided that we would try and offer in-house, and I think this came up in our French update at Board on Tuesday night. We are gonna try and offer a virtual French summer camp with some synchronous sessions where students can practice their French to kind of maybe fill gaps that have been created because of the distance learning situation we're in, or just to kind of feel more comfortable moving on to their next grade for next year. So I think that's where we're at with summer learning so far. So in terms of the next phase, and in the report that I provided for trustees, when I wrote that report and talked about some of the key considerations, they really, at that point, they were kind of key considerations for May thirty-first. Because we weren't sure at that point whether or not school closures would be extended and then weren't sure exactly what we would come back to. So we have a little bit more time to start to think about that transition process. The minister did make a commitment in his news conference or does an announcement on Tuesday that the ministry would have some guidelines in place by the end of June that boards could start to work off of. So that's obviously helpful. But again, we know that there's gonna be, there's lots of things that could happen between July and August that will necessitate some changes in those plans. So some of the things, this is a bit of a shopping list, but these are all sorts of things that we were considering for our return and will have to consider for our return in September. So obviously, and these are things we need to consider when students and staff come back in the building prior to the end of school in order to retrieve some of their personal belongings. So things like physical distancing, things about hygiene and hand washing and getting into those routines for our students. Our cleaning protocols. What types of equipment staff or students or teachers might need for their their own personal protection. Student transportation is gonna be something that's at the forefront if we still need by September to maintain some physical distancing. That has lots of implications for students riding the bus. There's lots of implications for how childcare operates, our before-and-after-school programs. So all of those sorts of things. Obviously, our priorities are over this period or as we come back in September, making sure that we've got solid protocols in place. From a curriculum perspective, spending time when we come back, determining what learning gap students may have, and then to plan our interventions in an appropriate way. We may come back to some continuation of distance learning to supplement day-to-day instruction. Again, we don't know what it'll look like in September, but we'll have to plan for that eventuality. And again, we'll need to have a real focus on continued supports for our students throughout the summer and then supports as our students and our staff come back to school and, having been out of school for so long, that'll present, I'm sure, some unique challenges. So those are all sorts of things that we're considering, will be considering over the next several months. I guess finally, from both a board and a parent and teacher perspective, we're trying to stay connected through our regular means of connection. We're updating our Learn at Home website as much as we can with new resources. I think one thing that's really key to point out in the written report the trustees have before them, and we talked about distance learning and what that could look like. In our initial phase, our initial six weeks, give or take of distance learning, while we were not discouraging Uh, while we were not discouraging synchronous uh, learning, it wasn't an expectation for our teachers. Uh, it certainly has been made clear by the ministry, um, and a, a desire amongst parents too, I think. Um, that, that, uh, that is an expectation going forward. I communicated with all of our educational staff uh, earlier this evening via email. Regarding uh, what our expectations are going forward. I'll follow up that, I'll follow up with a message to parents uh, tomorrow. Um, so essentially our expectations are kind of twofold going forward for our teachers. Uh, uh, we, we're asking them, directing them to continue. Uh, to explore ways in an asynchronous approach that they can better support students. And our teachers have got better at um, recorded video and different approaches as opposed to. Maybe just posting work online, so they're going to continue with that, but we also expect our teachers to be con- uh, connecting. With uh, whole groups, small group, um, individual students, um, at least weekly. In a number of different ways that we can do in kind of a synchronous format. And there's lots of different um, types of connections that they can make. I think trustees received um, a, a letter from Oxta that outlined some of those different. Uh, modalities that teachers can use uh, or employ. So that's going to be our expectation moving forward. That's what we're, we're going to support teachers with and that's what we'll be um, uh, asking our superintendents and principals to follow up on. So that was a mouthful and I'm sure there's uh, questions either for me or for some of our superintendents. That are um, uh, online, so I will turn it back to you, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Secretary, thank you, Secretary Daly. Uh, our staff has been creative and have been working hard. Uh, I will now, sorry, this is my mic. And this mic is on, okay. Uh, so I will now uh, open up the floor for discussion. Trustee Zarnata has a, has hand up. Trustee Zarnata, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, uh, Secretary Daly. Uh, first of all, I just want to tell you that. When I came home tonight, so I'm going to tell a little story here. And I opened up the paper to my surprise and to my pleasant surprise was an article about the Halt and Catholic District School Board. And uh, Secretary Daly was quoted in a very, um, if I was a parent, I would be feeling very comfortable about what you said in that article about. You know, no kids will be left behind, they will be scaffolded, they will be ensure the gap is met. Um, Superintendent Porcasin also spoke about the positive aspect of, you know, being in the COVID, so I'm very proud. To have opened that newspaper this afternoon when I got home from work and read that article, so kudos. To whoever wrote the article and the quotes that were put in by you, uh, Secretary Daly and Superintendent Porcasin. Um, it did talk about, you know, there was some, it was kind of weighted well, you know, some parents were happy, some parents were not. I mean, I think you get that during regular schools, some parents are happy, some parents are not, so I think it was a very well-balanced article. And um, my second point, and then I'll be done, is I just, I think that if I get any questions from our stakeholders, um. I will direct them to watch this live feed because I think that presentation. Uh, puts it all together, so if any parents or stakeholders have any questions, I'll lead them in this direction, so, well done.
Thank you, Trustee Zarnata. Uh, we'll move on to Trustee Guzzo. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I have several questions, so I know I'm only allowed two, so I'll start with two and then I'll go back in the queue.
Good.
I just have, I, I just have a clarifying point though because uh, Director Daly said one thing and then I thought I heard something else. So I, I heard him say that we're going to continue in an asynchronous way. But then made mention of being synchronous and that the SOs are going to follow up uh, on a weekly basis to ensure. Could you just clarify that before I ask my question? Um, was it, is it asynchronous or is there going to be synchronous learning?
Uh, yes, and through you, Mr. Chair, sorry about the, the confusion there, Trustee Guzzo. Uh, it will be asynchronous and synchronous. Um, so I think best practice moving forward will be a combination of delivering our distance learning in both of those formats.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, your follow-up question.
Oh, okay, that was the clarifying, I just need to clarify before I ask the question, sorry. Um, so these are coming from stakeholders, um, a, as I've uh, uh, let you know prior. Uh, Director Daly, um, that uh, I've had several parents reach out. Um, and one of the questions I was asked is consistency. Although it's not, it wasn't a priority at the start of how they were going, how things were going to be addressed, consistency of online learning. Um, I'm just going to read it directly, it says, my kids have not had any live contact with their teachers where. Uh, you hear other teachers reaching out via video or phone to make that personal connection. Um, what is going to be, and I think you just answered that, so then my question from that is, do we know what our co-terminus board is doing?
Secretary Daly?
Um, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, our co-terminus board up until last week, I, I, I think they were in a similar. Uh, sort of situation as us, um, and I really can't speak for the board, uh, for the co-terminus board, but certainly. Uh, synchronous uh, instruction was not an expectation. Uh, I believe that that uh, position has shifted and that uh, the expectation of their teachers. Is to um, a, again, connect in a synchronous way at least once a week uh, with their students. Uh, but I, I, I really can't speak to this, because I, I, I believe that's the direction they've, they've received.
Actually, they have, I have, um, I've seen, thank you, I have seen actually the communication that has gone out to them. Where it's actually mandated that synchronous learning is to use, uh, be used as part of the whole class instruction with small groups of students. And I'm, I'm reading directly from the communication from the director, um, and, or in a one-on-one context. Um, that all students will, on a weekly basis, will have this at a minimum. Um, there's a definition of what the synchronous learning is. Uh, it goes into all the different um, platforms that can be used. Um, and it says that it was the variety of tools also included synchronous learning. Um, so another, other questions that have come forward is, is why is it that one board can offer synchronous learning regularly? And others can't, because we have parents who have two children in our board, let's say one in grade two, one in grade five. And both students aren't receiving anywhere near similar um, platforms of learning. Um, the grade two student, this was one parent, a question came from her. That her grade two student is actually having more engagement and more um, work assigned than the grade five student.
Secretary Daly?
So uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if the question was um, regarding the public board's direction and our direction. Uh, so that direction from the public board, I think, came out just prior to the long weekend. Uh, our direction to our staff, uh, we were waiting, to be quite honest, to see what direction the ministry was going to give us. In terms of whether school was going to be open or closed for the rest of the year. Uh, so as I said, uh, we, uh, I provided uh, direction to our staff uh, earlier uh, this evening. And uh, an update will go to parents tomorrow in terms of what they can expect moving forward. Um, so I, 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 I think the uh, the, the um, director's message that Trustee Guzzo was speaking to. Uh, went out to the public board, it might have just been.
I, I believe it was the.
Trustee, uh, Guzzo.
Thank you, Trustee, um, I'm, I'll go back in the queue because there's other people, I don't want to take all the time.
That's what I was going to suggest, I was going to suggest we circle back to you.
Yeah, it was, uh, just after the May announcement was when this communication went out.
Okay, we'll circle back to you, Trustee Guzzo.
For the long weekend.
Thank you, we'll circle, we'll come back. Uh, next in line, uh, Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, uh, and this is probably to Director Daly, I also have a few questions, so I will just be respectful, obviously, and ask my, my question. With a follow-up if needed and then go back into the queue. Um, so, so one of the questions that I did have, um, is with reference to the synchrona- uh, syn- synchronous learning. I'm understanding that there is direction going out um, to staff and to parents tomorrow. I, I'm, I'm just curious if the individual needs of students will be taken into consideration with respect to what method of synchronous. Instruction is being given, so um, you know, will it be one mode? Let's just say that, you know, some kids uh, do better visually with a visual instruction or pre-recorded. Some kids may do better uh, processing a phone call. Uh, will it be one modality? For uh, the entire um, class? And again, will that decision be up to the teacher as to whether or not they want to participate that and into what method? So may we see some inconsistency with respect to the modalities being used across the system?
Um, I don't think, uh, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, will we see differences in, in what modalities teachers use? A- absolutely, I would anticipate we would. Um, uh, again, under the, under the idea that. Teachers know their kids best and hopefully would know what modality would fit best with uh, either their whole class. Or probably more typically, um, a smaller group of their class, but not, um, not necessarily. Um, I think that's been demonstrated somewhat in terms of the work that we've done in trying to support some of our, our special needs students. Uh, with, with that direct EA support. Um, and I think it's also um, important to remember, we're talking about a pretty wide. K to twelve continuum where um, some students, well, every, obviously all students benefit from. A direct connection with their teacher. I think it might look different in a, in a grade ten history class than it might look in a, in a grade two class, so. Um, will, will there be differences in terms of whether it's a face-to-face chat or it's a live? Um, uh, email exchange or is it office hours? Yeah, there will be differences from teacher to teacher and course to course, yeah.
Trustee Agnew?
Okay, so, so a follow-up then, um, so, you know, for students who may um, not be as comfortable with an email piece. Uh, and, and may want to connect directly with a teacher face-to-face, again. So the understanding, if I'm understanding you correctly then, is that the teacher will be able to take those into account and hopefully. Um, utilize different modalities uh, when connecting with the students in their class?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I, I have another question, not a follow-up, so I'll go back in the queue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to Trustee Murphy. Trustee Murphy, if the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I have uh, two questions, so. The first is to Trustee, uh, Zarnata, what's a newspaper? Do you guys churn your own butter too up there?
We do, thank you.
I'm just kidding, you know, you know I care, that's why I'm kidding.
The best butter ever.
Awesome. Get me one of those buggy whips too. Uh, okay, enough fun. So, uh, Director Daly, thank you very much, that was an excellent report, it was very comprehensive. Uh, I'm going to keep the same theme going about asynchronous learning, which um, from my experience as a parent, there's. There's immense value to it and, and uh, my children love it, they, they light up. My son had uh. A Zoom meeting today with his class and, and uh, there's just a huge benefit to that. I guess my concern is that, you know, we just, uh, we just had some collective bargaining and we've signed agreements with our unions. This is something that really wasn't on our radar and I'm sure wasn't on, necessarily on the union's radar. What position, moving forward if this gets extended, let's say, worst-case scenario? Um, are we, is it something that we need to deal with at the union, is it something we need to try and negotiate? What, what um, what are the ramifications of synchronous learning in that context?
Um, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, that's certainly something, um, I, I think that speaks to what our planning could be for next year. Uh, Trustee Murphy, and, and again, I can't, I can't speak on, on behalf of um, our, our associations. Um, I do know that over the last couple of weeks, um, I, I think the approach um, with, with ELECTO, with our teachers has. Been uh, to caution teachers and um, to say that i- if you're going to, um, if this is a type of. Uh, teaching that, that you're going to do, keep in mind that there are certain uh, things that you want to keep in mind. It's the same sorts of things, board policies, safety, privacy, all those sorts of things that we would, we would encourage our teachers to do as well. Um, but I think there's no doubt that if we come back in September in uh, some sort of a blended learning format. Um, i- i- if, if, uh, whether that means all students are back in school or some are back and. Some are, uh, you know, it's half-day or however that's going to look. If we do have to supplement the program with some form of distance learning. Uh, it can't be what we started with six weeks ago. Uh, it can't be really where we're at right now. Uh, I think all teachers. Want to do the best job they can for their students. I think all of our teachers have tried to get better at what they're doing. Some of them are still really nervous about it. That's uh, that's on us, uh, to help train people and put their minds at ease. But certainly the expectation as we enter into September, uh, will be a different expectation. That we had back in March, when let's remember, we thought we were maybe going to be out for a couple of weeks. And it was called continuity of learning, quite honestly, I think for a reason. We were trying to continue some form of learning. Uh, it wasn't a movement to a total online program. Uh, I mean, that's been reflected in, in what the expectations are around hours of instruction. The fact that we're not covering all of the curriculum, that we focused on a few areas, so. Um, I see the benefits uh, in it, uh, used in a, in a, an appropriate way for many students. Uh, like, like anything, uh, we want to try and meet some, meet the needs of our students. And, and individualized programs as much as we can, but that will certainly be um, what our expectation is. Uh, come September and our expectation over the next six weeks. And uh, we've had many conversations with our um, our ELECTO partners over the last several weeks. A- a- around that, around that question and those will continue.
Okay, thanks, Secretary. We will now move down to, to Trustee Suon. Uh, Trustee Guzzo, I'll give Trustee Suon the opportunity because you have, uh, it's the first time he's going to speak and then I'll come back to you. Trustee Suon, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, just to Director Daly, thank you very much for the reports, very comprehensive, very detailed. And I, I think this uh, will kind of resolve, or not necessarily resolve, but I think answer a lot of the questions that some. Um, uh, some of our parents and students have. I'm just wondering, has the board received any? I guess, not complaints, but I would say like, maybe concerns um, in regards to implementing and. Uh, implementing synchronous learning, so for instance, issues regarding privacy, uh, maybe the student is not comfortable doing one-on-one. Um, and how has the board tried to address that?
Uh, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I haven't had concerns come to me about. Um, you know, students being, I don't want to say forced into synchronous learning. I do know, um, uh, because I had this conversation this evening because I'm, I'm married to a teacher. Um, so uh, sometimes while a teacher might want to reach out in that way to a student. Uh, the student might be reluctant um, at first to engage in that kind of learning. That's something that you work out with the parent and the student. Um, and maybe in terms of it just being one student, one teacher, maybe it's the teacher and another colleague. There's, there's kind of ways around that, um, but uh, those sorts of privacy concerns. Uh, haven't come to me, but I might ask um, maybe Superintendent Cipriano to talk a little bit about. Maybe how some of those, if those concerns have come, um, how, how, um. How his departments work through them, because I, I think while many of our teachers, um, obviously not completely across the board. Or in every school, have engaged in some synchronous learning, we've probably had more experience with it. Uh, through our special education department, so I don't know Superintendent Cipriano, if you've had those concerns come to you? Or maybe if you have, how you, how we've worked through them.
Sure, thank you, uh, uh, Pat, and through you, Mr. Chair. It, we've had some concerns around technology, uh, in that, in that synchronous style of learning, in that real-time, one-to-one support. Pos- the, the one difference though is, and I've, I think I've, I've mentioned this earlier in a report that we provided to the board at a previous board meeting. In special education, all of our synchronous-type learning, which we are i- involved in, in quite a bit as you see through the report, is in one-to-one. So when there are challenges, it makes it a, a little bit uh, easier to resolve challenges uh, in, in a one-to-one format. A lot of our one-to-one synchronous-type learning and supports through our EA. A lot of our one-to-one synchronous-type learning and supports through our EA's, CERTs, our speech and language pathologists, our CDAs, parents are involved as well. They're supporting their child on the laptop or iPad or piece of technology. So we have an adult sitting in with a child. So it has come up. We have resolved them in those instances, but they're one-offs and so it's difficult to take lessons learned from that and apply them to what we're hoping now to begin or continue with synchronous learning at a larger scale in our classrooms, at a larger scale or small groups. And so I'd be reluctant to provide any type of learning for larger scale because of the uniqueness of special education right now in what we're providing to students.
Thank you. Trustee Suwan, do you have a follow-up question or can we move forward?
You can move forward.
Okay, okay, thank you, trustees. We are going to move to round number two of the questions. I just want to be a little cognizant of the time. So this is round number two of questions, so trustees, please keep your questions a little brief. Trustee Guzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So one of the other questions that I received was, are we going to be standardizing learning? People feel that there isn't a standardized availability of learning with the platforms that have been delivered. And they don't feel that they understand what the expectation are or is. I get such varied questions from parents and they're all very similar is, why do we get, why is this happening here and not happening there? And there's a lot of comparison because there doesn't seem to be any consistency. So I don't really think I've heard that there is a plan to standardize, and if I did, I apologize. But if there is, what is that plan and how does it look?
Thank you, Director, if I can just ask a bit of a clarifying question. When you talk about standardizing platforms, trustee Guzo, do you mean standardizing D2L or Microsoft or Google? Is that what you mean by the platform?
Standardizing learning is not just the platforms. It's an expectation of, you know, why do some have connection, why don't others? It's hard to put into one specific question because there is so many varying. Like I said, I used the example a little earlier where somebody says, you know, from grade two to grade five. Then I had somebody else say, you know, we've had absolutely no contact whatsoever. Then I've had another person say, oh, I've had some contact. And it's just so different and so varying. And there's these group chats that happen, whether it be there's Facebook group chats for schools. There's several of them that I actually am on. And a lot of the questions come continuously. And every parent has a varying difference of what their experience is. And there doesn't seem to be any type of consistency. So are we going to, is the plan to standardize something or create at least a minimum of what people can expect?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So we have indicated, if the question is again back to kind of synchronous types of instruction, we have indicated what our minimum expectation is to our teachers. In terms of kind of classroom-to-classroom comparison, the standard is really the Ontario curriculum. That's what we ask our teachers to teach to. And much like there's variation in a face-to-face environment when students have or teachers have students in front of them in the classroom, there's going to be variation in terms of that online environment as well. We've certainly tried to support our teachers in getting better or more proficient at even in an asynchronous environment of being able to engage students. We're continuing to work on that. So I don't think I can confidently say that every student's experience will be the exact same in the online format. But certainly our expectations around moving to synchronous modalities, increasing proficiency with more engaging asynchronous methods is what we're asking or directing our teachers to do, asking our principals to monitor and trying to support from a broad perspective. In terms of specific parent concerns about a specific class or, again, I guess I would ask the parent to try and contact, and I know, as trustees, we're good at following the kind of that protocol, ask them to have that conversation with the teacher, to have the conversation with the principal so that we can try and address those specific circumstances.
Thank you, Secretary Daly. Trustee Guzo, can we move forward or?
Yeah, go ahead. I will go back into the loop.
Okay, thank you, trustee Guzo. We will move on to trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I actually just have a question with respect to the younger grades. So maybe specifically looking at the JK, SK, even into the grade one piece. And I'm wondering, so there's two pieces, I guess, this. The one I'm wondering is, is there an expectation that that learning will continue for those ages until the end of the school year? I have been hearing from some parents and from some educators as well that they're starting to lose the students as the weather gets nicer. Obviously, that's a harder age to try to keep engaged that entire time. So is the expectation that there will still be active plans and, yeah, planning being done for those grades until the end of the year?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question, trustee Agnew. Absolutely, that is the expectation. That's been made clear from the get-go. We do understand that some students are disengaging for a number of, like, there could be all kinds of different reasons. What we've said to, or the way I've explained it at least to our principals, and hopefully I know they've expressed it to their staff, is out of your class of 20 or 25, if there's only 10 kids that are still engaged, boy, you can really teach the heck out of those 10 kids for the next six weeks. Like if you want to talk about maybe trying to personalize or really dig down on those students who are still hanging in there, then that's what we're encouraging. We're hopeful that students will re-engage. But I know our principals and our teachers have had lots of conversations with parents that for a variety of reasons, and I've had this conversation with parents too, they've just said, it's just my own circumstance at home, it's just too challenging right now. And really what they're asking is, is my child going to be okay? And they are going to be okay. But we're certainly committed to providing instruction for the remainder of the school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, quick.
Okay, thank you. So just on that vein, Director Daly, this is more of a looking at the September piece and understanding obviously that there's just so much that's uncertain. And I appreciated the phases tonight in taking a look at what's being considered for that possible, you know, September opening. I'm wondering about the JK, again about the JKs and the SKs and, you know, looking at how, you know, how do you handle social distancing or physical distancing with kids that are, you know, three, four, or five years old in a play-based program? And I'm just wondering, you know, even their seating, even, you know, just the way that the classroom is set up, if there will be different considerations that you know of that will be given for, again, some of those younger grades with respect to that phase in in September?
Thank you, that's a great question too, and it's certainly something that we've been trying to think about. If physical distancing, if the two-meter physical distancing is, you know, still the best way in order to maintain safety, that obviously creates some real practical considerations in terms of our physical buildings. You can't put 30 JK, SK kids in a regular-sized class and spread them out two meters apart. So if in fact that's the case, it might mean that we only have half the class in every other day or half the day or those are some of the sort of, those are the sort of things we're going to have to kind of plan through. I think we've all probably seen certainly some other countries that have kind of opened up schools again and the procedures that they've used. I think actually I sent a bit of a video clip to trustees regarding some schools in Denmark in trying to keep kids apart physically. So that's going to be a challenge, absolutely. I'll be honest with you, one of my concerns is whether or not, even with appropriate safety measures put in place, is whether or not some of those JK parents will in fact want to send their kids to school. Because it is for those younger kids, it's optional. So those are the sorts of things that all the boards are looking at. I know that the ministry and boards have a bit of an eye to British Columbia and Quebec right now because they have opened up in a kind of a limited sense. So we'll hopefully be able to gain some insight there. But it's going to be challenging for sure. And in terms of, again, that physical proximity, short of limiting how many students are in a class, I'm not sure I could hazard a guess as to what else we could do at this point. But that's obviously what I know the ministry working group is going to be looking at. I don't think that's helpful.
No, no, I think it's just good to know, thank you, Director Daly. It's just good to know that this is just something that's on the radar. Because I do think about those younger kids and I think it's a lot easier, you know, to tell grades, you know, even four, five, even three, four, five, six, you know, to tell those students, you know, hands off and try to, even wearing masks, whatever that might look like. But it certainly becomes a huge challenge for those kids, again with play-based learning. So I think it was just important to, I did have that come forward as a question and I wanted to bring that up, so thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. We'll move forward, trustee Zarnata, and with that we complete the second round of questions. We have to be cognizant of the time after that. Trustees, the floor is yours.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And just to scaffold what Secretary Daly and trustee Agnew, I mean, let's face it, in my day job, it's hard to get adults to keep away from each other, physical distancing. So the challenge is on the table for our board. Secondly, a question, I'm not sure if it should be input here, and please tell me if it shouldn't. But when I was watching the Ministry of Education speak, at one point he mentioned about, you know, mental health initiatives. And I thought I was going to hear him say there'll be additional money to the board. But instead I heard him say, you know, use the money that you already have. I think that's correct. Couldn't someone maybe confirm that for me through you to Secretary Daly?
Maybe I'll start off and through you, Mr. Chair. So in terms of some additional supports for students, we are anticipating some short-term funding. So we're waiting to see some of the details on that. I think what may happen, and this is a bit of supposition, it's possible that the ministry might open up our ability to take spending from one area and move it to another area where maybe in the past we haven't. So there might be a little bit more flexibility around existing funds. The ministry has, I mean, we've been able, we've been fortunate over the last number of years to really increase our complement of support around mental health. We always could use more, but we've been pretty fortunate. But I haven't seen anything specific about increased funding. Superintendent Cipriano, I don't know if you could maybe add anything to that?
Thanks. Pat, I would just echo what you've said. We've heard nothing in the form of funding specifics to dollars or increase in our budgets for the summer. I know that the recent ministry memo that came out about summer programs and summer supports, they're very high-level type direction and with not a lot of specifics. You'd mentioned earlier to the trustees this evening that I met this afternoon with fellow colleagues of special education from around the province and Catholic school boards. And that same question came up around funding for mental health supports, increased funding. Is there going to be, you know, some type of infusion of into our budget for that support? Nothing has come out yet, is the short answer.
And I guess my concern with that is, as we all know, we're the lowest-funded board. So to have the lowest-funded board try to move around money concerns me. And I thought he was going to say in that speech that we're going to increase the money, but that's not what I heard, so.
Okay, trustee Zarnata, I have to interrupt. It's 9:59. I would like to extend if possible, and would someone like to put a motion to extend?
I will.
Trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Trustee Guzo.
Trustee Guzo, seconded. I'll go around the table and take a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bamra?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Suwan?
In favor.
Trustee Carter?
In favor.
Motion carries. Trustee Zarnata, you have, you will continue?
No, I just really wanted to illustrate the concerns, again, about being the lowest GSN. And in this time of COVID, when we may need more resources, I mean, I don't know what to do with it. It might turn into an action item at a future board meeting, but I really just wanted to go on record to say it.
Thank you, trustee Zarnata. So we are into round three of questions. Trustee Guzo, do you have anything new?
I do.
Because, yeah, we have 30 minutes more and we have quite a few things. We should, we might have to have another special meeting to complete this special meeting. So let's move fast now, thank you.
It is new, Chair, to work. So, and just in a kind of plays off of what trustee O'Hearn Zarnata just said in regards to the mental health and I think just moving forward, so I have a motion I'd like to put forward that be it resolved that Director Daly implement synchronous learning at minimum once per week and that this direction will be communicated to parents. Be it further resolved that the board will continue to plan for the possible continuation of distant learning in the new school year so that learning experiences be standardized. And be it further resolved that policies be developed specific to distant learning for the next policy meeting. I will provide it, I can type it out and send it to everybody.
Send to Rosie, trustee Guzo, Rosie could put up there.
Absolutely. So that is by motion.
So do we have a second of the motion?
I can second it.
Trustee Agnew? Discussion? Trustee Guzo?
Yes. So I think just with some of the questions and the feedback that we've had from parents, I think this is a really important piece. I know there was a survey that was done. You know, just going through and looking at some of the other boards, and I know the Peel District Board has implemented their synchronous learning that's happening there as well. And with our Co-Terminals Board as well offering synchronized learning. And the mental health piece, we have some students who have had no contact with any of their fellow students. And I just think, I just think it will create a minimum that at least we know that all students will have some sort of synchronous contact or some sort of contact. And I can define, by the way, what that synchronous learning would look like if needed in regards to whether it's with one-on-one. The other thing is, REAs have successfully implemented this and have done a wonderful job. We are hearing wonderful feedback and I think it is something that is definitely possible.
Okay, I'll open up the floor to discussion. Any trustees have any comments or concerns? Rosie, if you have the motion, can you put it up, please? Trustee Agnew, do you have anything to say? You're next, my man.
I do. Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure, I know that Director Daly had mentioned that there was correspondence that went out today to the teachers, so I'm not sure if perhaps, that went out today to the teachers, so I'm not sure if perhaps, I'm not sure if perhaps if this information was addressed in that correspondence. Maybe it's a mute point, if that has already been communicated as part of the direction and guidance that's been given to the teachers with respect to synchronous learning? I don't know, but I'm just wondering if that was part of that communication?
Can I just interrupt for a second? Trustee Guzzo, Rosie does not have the motion, so she's asking to?
I'm typing it, I'm typing it into the box right now.
Okay, thank you. Secretary Daly, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. As I did mention earlier on, our expectations were sent out to teaching staff today. I'd be happy to share that letter with trustees if they'd like to take a look at it. The plan was to follow up tomorrow morning with a letter to parents explaining what our expectations were. I'm still working on that letter. As always, any communication that goes to parents, we try and send it to trustees prior to it going out. Sometimes it's two minutes before it goes out, but I'd obviously share that information with trustees as well.
Okay, Trustee Agnew, I'll move to Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Director Daly. Could you provide your feedback on this motion? So to me, you know, I feel we're in crisis mode, yes, this is now six weeks, but it's such a departure from our historical structure and historical ways of delivering that, you know, we're still changing and adapting and modifying this plan. So I'm just a little concerned with putting limits on if it's, you know, how are we going to police it? Is it attainable? If it's something that is attainable, I would love to hear that, or if there is specific challenges that it's going to create, I would like to hear that side of it also.
Secretary Daly?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'll have to wait until we can actually take a look at it because there was a couple of, a couple of things in the motion. So as I said, in terms of our expectations around synchronous learning, that was expressed to teachers today with a follow-up email to parents tomorrow morning. I thought I heard another part of the motion was to bring a policy to the next policy meeting. I think that would be ambitious. Certainly, if a part of the direction or expectation of trustees is that we have a plan in place for when we return in September, again, I think I mentioned that that's what we'll be working on, are working on. The ministry's committed to a template around re-entry by the end of June, and that's something we'll be planning towards or planning for, for our return in September. And also noted that if distance learning is part of our delivery for, our delivery model in September, I think I did note that it wouldn't be the same as where we're at right now.
Secretary Daly, the motion is in the chat box.
Thank you.
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, a question for Trustee Guzzo. I'm just, I'm looking through it, and I guess what I'm looking at is, sorry, I'm just reading through it. Is there a definition of what the synchronous learning would look like? Because I know that, again, we spoke earlier this evening about the possible different modalities for synchronized learning. So are we just saying that at a minimum, we'd like to see some form of synchronous learning happening at least once per week? Or, I mean, is that up to the discretion of the teacher as far as what method they want to use? But we're just trying to ensure that that happens at least a minimum of once per week as a, almost like a standardized process?
Trustee Guzzo, your response?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Trustee Agnew, I actually, I had said that I could define what synchronous learning is if we need to, we can, and just talking about whether it's learning with one-on-one or if it's more than one student and their teacher. It could be in different platforms, if it can't be online because you have, you know, anxieties, whether it be through the teacher or through the student, it can be on the telephone. It could be the whole class, it could be small groups and small group instructions, but it has to be that there is, currently, we don't have, we have some teachers that do use it and we have some that don't have any of that check-in. So that would be kind of the definition, and we could define it as, to be, for clarity's sakes, if need be. But it's not, not to say that everybody has to do, let's say, like a Google Meet and the whole classrooms there. If it's a one-on-one, that's great. And just like the EAs, like right now, currently, you know, the EAs are doing one-on-one, and I'm not sure if some of them are supporting more than one student at a time. But we do have children that are on IPs that aren't necessarily, who have EAs assigned to them, but do require that check-in, that ability to stay focused, and aren't necessarily getting any type of synchronous learning whatsoever. So at least this way, it would be that form of check-in with the student directly.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. We'll move on to Trustees Zarnota.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect to Trustee Guzzo, I think it's a little too early to be putting a motion on the table. I think we just heard from Secretary Daly about the wishes to move into the synchronous environment, so I think it's too early. I think we need to let them make their plans, and then if we feel that those plans are not adequate, then we could put a motion forward.
Thank you, Trustees Zarnota. I'm going to jump to Director Daly, before Trustee Kertow, Director Daly?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and sorry, I'm reading off my phone here, but the message that was, parts of the message that went out to teaching staff today, synchronous activities could range from weekly check-ins with students via phone or Teams meetings, to the use of activity feeds on virtual learning platforms that allow both teachers and students to post and respond to questions, virtual office hours to work in small groups or answer questions, to video or audio lessons. Just moving down a little bit further, as a minimum, educators would be involved in type of synchronous communication on a consistent weekly basis over the next six weeks.
Thank you, Director Daly. Trustee Kertow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is to Director Daly. Thank you for presenting to us especially the benefits of synchronous learning. If the board were to adopt Trustee Guzzo's motion that would mandate once per week synchronous learning meetings between parents, sorry, between teachers and students, how can we guarantee that students will actually be in attendance during those sessions? Because for all of its benefits, it doesn't mean much if attendance is not mandatory at all. Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. We certainly couldn't guarantee it, but I don't think that means we don't want to offer it. And again, I think I was clear in my communication with teachers today that we do expect synchronous communication, synchronous activity consistently on a weekly basis over the remainder of the school year.
Secretary Daly, you're muted?
Sorry, we couldn't guarantee that participation, but hopefully students would participate because they'd see value in it.
Okay, we'll move on to Trustees Swan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to, I guess, comment on, or actually ask a question to, I guess, I'll ask my question to, direct my question to Trustee Guzzo, it's just that if we are, I guess, mandating that there is synchronous learning to happen every, once, at least once every week, we know that students are quite busy during the summer, especially if they have part-time jobs as well, they may be accommodating more hours. So just in light of this motion, are we saying students won't necessarily be mandated to attend these calls or participate in synchronous learning? It's just there if we, it's just there if they need it, right? So we're not mandating students to just participate in synchronous learning, it's there if they need it, but we're not forcing them to do so, it's just a supplement.
Okay, Trustee Guzzo, could you answer to that? I think we're running out of time, so either we need to make a decision after this. Trustee Guzzo?
Okay, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. It's 10:13, as per my, just to answer that, thank you, Trustee Swan. I think, in all fairness, I think that this would be a huge benefit for those elementary students, I think it would be great for high school students. I don't think it needs to be mandated that the students attend, however, there is still an online learning platform for the high school students, they are checking in, there is work to be required. It can be done, if it can, there are multiple ways of it to be done, it doesn't have to be at a certain, like at a defined time. If it doesn't work, I'm sure that there is a way that the student and the teacher can mutually agree to some sort of check-in, something that works for both. I'm not saying that the teacher has to make themselves available at all hours of the day by any means, and I'm not saying that the student has to do the same either, but there is somewhat of an expectation that there is time spent daily at school, like doing schoolwork. I'm assuming that the majority are, and that would kind of be what the expectation would be.
Okay, trustees, so there's nobody else in the queue, so I guess we will take this to?
I am in the queue, Chair.
Trustee Guzzo, okay, I thought you had the floor, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I do have a question. I just want to clarify from Director Daly, he read off of that email that he sent out to staff, so is that directing staff to do synchronous learning, or is it still considered optional, is my understanding?
No, it's not considered optional.
Okay, so when I asked the question from your report, and I said the question about asynchronous and versus synchronous, you had said that asynchronous was the direction, however, that you encourage synchronous. So the communication that has gone out now to staff is saying that they are required to do synchronous learning?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, the communication to staff is that they will provide synchronous learning, synchronous connection with students on a consistent weekly basis over the next six weeks. Our expectation is also that teachers will continue asynchronous instruction over the next six weeks as well. So a combination of those two approaches.
Okay, so thanks for, because, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, just a follow-up to that. If that is in the case, the direction that is given, then my first part of my motion would be met. So I know Trustee Murphy had asked the question if it was possible, but it sounds like it is possible because you've already given that direction.
That's correct. That direction came out earlier this evening.
Thank you, Trustee Guzzo. Secretary Daly, you were in the queue, do you have anything to say?
No, just that I think that for the first couple of parts of the motion, the direction to teaching staff and then follow-up communication with parents, I think the first part of the motion has been taken care of, and the second, the plan, was the second part of the motion would be done through communication with parents tomorrow.
Thank you, Secretary Daly. Trustee De Rosa is here. Trustee De Rosa, do you have something to say on regarding this, or do you, should we take it to a vote? Trustee De Rosa?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just joined. I'm actually returning from a visit with my grandchildren, so I just joined, I will make the best of it, pretend for this particular situation, I'm not here, or I'll abstain, whatever the case might be, and I'm here to read my notice of motion.
Thank you.
At least, okay?
Thank you, trustee. Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Okay, I think I see a message here. Trustee Guzzo says I would like to defer this motion.
Sorry, for you, Mr. Chair, yes, I would like to defer this motion, I'd like to wait to see the communications that was sent to staff and the communication that will go out to parents, which obviously will be forthcoming. I would like to see those communications and then I can defer this motion to the next meeting so that if part of this motion is mute, then there's no sense in moving forward with it. So I would like to defer my motion.
Okay, so are trustees in agreement with this?
I think you need a second for it, Chair.
We do have a second for your motion, don't we?
To defer? Do you need a second to defer? I can second that.
Okay, so Trustee Agnew seconded the motion to defer the motion on the floor. Do we need to take a recorded vote, or are all trustees in agreement with this?
Take a recorded vote.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes. Trustee De Rosa?
Just for my benefit, and I apologize for chiming in, like, can you read the motion that's on the floor?
The motion is in the chat list, if you go up the chat list, a couple of discussions, the motion is right there. I'll read it for your?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Be it resolved that the Director, Director Daly implement synchronous learning at a minimum of at least once a week, once per week, and that this will be communicated to parents. Be it further resolved that the board will continue to plan for possible continuation of distant learning in the new school year so that learning experiences be standardized. Be it further resolved that policies be developed specifically to distance learning for the next policy meeting. So that motion is being deferred. We're taking it to a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bamra?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnota?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
I will vote in favor of deferment.
Trustee Kertow?
In favor.
Motion carries. We shall now move to item 4.3. Notice of motion, financial reporting and board responsibilities for financial oversight. Trustee De Rosa is here. Trustee De Rosa, please read the motion. There is no discussion on this.
Thank you, let me.
The motion is up on the screen?
Yes, it is, okay, so.
Please go ahead.
Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees direct the Secretary of the Board, starting in the fiscal year 2020-2021, to provide the Board of Trustees actual monthly financial results compared to the plan for the same month and identify the variances with appropriate explanation. Be it further resolved that all changes to the approved plan over $150,000 will be reviewed and approved by the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. There's no discussion on this. This item will be placed as an action item on the June 2, 2020 regular board meeting agenda. We shall now move to discussion item, graduation ceremonies and proms. Trustee Agnew, please be cognizant of the time, it's 10:22, thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I, so when I had put this request initially on the agenda, we hadn't yet seen the report for the distance learning and extended school closures. And I know that there is reference in Director Daly's report on, you know, how the grads are possibly being handled. So probably didn't need to have as much discussion as I initially was thinking we may need. But just for clarification, perhaps, Director Daly, if you could just maybe explain a little bit about how that's being handled as far as the graduation? Are we looking at doing a virtual in the spring? Are they looking at doing something live in the fall? Is, how are the schools handling it? Is there consistency in communication across the schools with students and teachers? I'm just curious that, as you mentioned earlier, that's such a huge piece for our grade eight and grade 12 students, and I'm just wondering how that's being handled to try to make this as best as we can in this situation.
Trustee Agnew, who do you want, Secretary Daly?
Sorry, I muted myself too quickly. I'm assuming Director Daly, and I have received a lot of, I have received a lot of questions about this, and certainly, obviously, encourage parents to reach out to, you know, their schools, but there just has been different communication coming from different schools, and just wondering from a board perspective, you know, what I guess the expectation is around the grad piece.
Secretary Daly, you're the man, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask Superintendent Nar to give a bit of a... I'm going to ask Superintendent Nar to give a bit of an update. She's been working with our secondary school principals and family of schools, elementary principals, around kind of, I guess, common sort of expectations. So if Superintendent Nar is on, available, I'll ask her to update, and if not, then I'll update.
Okay, Chair, I'm on, Pat, thank you very much. So yes, we've had several conversations with our administrators, and they're all very eager to honor the important milestone of graduation, recognizing it's been a very different year and challenging year for students in their graduating years. So we've had some conversations, and we've sort of set up a guideline of some things that will be consistent from school to school, but we also have to recognize that each school community is, has different unique pieces to it, and, you know, unique ways of also celebrating. So for some of the areas that we are intending to be consistent, we first of all have asked our administrators that they consult with their parents and the students in the graduating classes, because I think it's really important that they listen to what is important to them as the graduates. So we are asking them to consult with those families to get an idea of some of the things that would be important to them. That being said, not every idea that a parent or a child may send in will be feasible, but they will certainly try and gather that information and plan something that reflects the community's wishes as close as we can as possible. Every school will be hosting a virtual graduation celebration ceremony in June. There had been lots of questions around, do we do it in June? Do we wait and do it in the fall, when we can gather? We're not so sure we can gather in the fall. So we will be celebrating virtually the graduations for each of our schools in June. It's up to the schools, of course, when that will be, whether they're sticking to their original grad dates or changing that up a little bit. We also will ensure that schools that normally would do awards and scholarships, that they will still be able to do those awards and scholarships and honor those students in June through their virtual celebration. It may look a little bit different because they may have difficulty getting the actual trophies. They've been in contact with the trophy companies, and some of them can't give us timelines on when they're up and running and so on. But they'll be honored through the virtual ceremony, and the trophy may follow, or the plaques may follow. Awards, sorry, the valedictorians, those schools that have valedictorians, a lot of them have already started the online process for voting for the valedictorian speeches. So they will have a place in their ceremony for valedictorians. They are all working on different ways of getting the diplomas to the students, so that may look different in each school, but certainly they will continue to follow their normal practice. They will all be connecting with their parish priest to ensure that there is an opportunity for the parishes to either insert a message that gets delivered to the students, record a message that goes into the ceremony, or even participate live in the ceremony. A lot of them have already had conversations in their parishes around the priest's offering a virtual liturgy, or a recording of a liturgy for the students to be included in their ceremony. As well, as we've always done, we've had a place for trustees to participate in each of our graduations every year, so that same expectation will happen. And I've asked principals that we can work with communication so that you can either record a message and have that as part of their ceremony, or you can participate live, depending on schedules, timing, all of those things, and how the school is doing their virtual ceremony, or even a written message that gets delivered to the students. So it needs to reflect, you know, what works for you and what works for those schools the way they're doing it, but there will be a way of you communicating with the graduating classes in your schools. And the same will go for, we will have a message from our director, and as well superintendents for those schools, and the same thing, it can be delivered live, it can be delivered by recording, or in a written note that gets taken to the students. So that's how we've left it with our, we have a memo going out tomorrow that sort of outlines all of those things for them. But we certainly know that there's, we've collected some of the ideas that a lot of the schools are doing, some are looking at lawn signs, some are looking at, you know, ways of having a pickup of your diploma. So certainly, all of those unique things that schools have been planning, some have ordered shirts, some have ordered, have boxes that'll be delivered, and that, they'll still follow public health protocols, but we'll leave those unique ways of celebrating with the students up to the schools. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Nar.
I just want to say thank you quickly, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you very much, Superintendent Nar, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, what we've been looking for, so thank you for that, and I love that the trustees are being included again. That was my favorite thing last year, was doing the graduation roadshow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Agnew, Trustee Agnew. So it's 10:30, we have a couple of items left. Before that, we need to do our favorite ritual, and it has to be a unanimous vote, so I'd like to ask if trustees would like to put a motion to extend. It has to be unanimous, the couple of items left, and decision is ours. So anybody putting a motion to extend?
I'll move it.
Trustee Zenata?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy seconded. We'll do a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bamra?
In favor.
Trustee Zenata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Kertau?
In favor.
Thank you, it's been unanimous. We shall now.
What about you?
I can be in favor. Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. We have a question here. Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to either Director Daly or Superintendent Crowell. How are we going to handle the JV diplomas and graduations, since more than likely we're not going to have the name approved by the bishop by the time their graduation ceremony happens?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll ask Superintendent Crowell to respond to that, if you could.
Sure, I'll do my best. It's a good question, it's one that we've talked about. We have sort of been, conversation with the ministry a little bit around diplomas, and I'll have to follow up with you at the next Board meeting or via email, because we still will have an answer for that. It's a great question.
Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you, that's one in a row for me.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo says good point. Trustee Kertau, you have something to say?
Oh, no, nothing to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no more questions, we shall move on to the next item. Item number six, miscellaneous information. The minutes of the January 2020 CIPIC meeting is in the package, minutes are provided. Item number seven, correspondence says Toronto Catholic District School Board, there's a correspondence letter from the Toronto Catholic District School Board for information purposes. In camera, we do not need to go into camera. Item nine, resolution regarding absentees. I see we have Trustee Yan Tomasi is absent, and Trustee Caribella is absent. I need a motion to, I need a motion to excuse them.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to excuse them.
Trustee DeRosa? Second, I think I need a second, right?
Yes, I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy, seconded. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, I had my hand up before we voted.
Oh, Trustee Zenata, sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, Trustee Zenata, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I just had a question through you, Mr. Chair. But I'm on 5.5, so governance of our Board, I want to make sure we're holding ourselves accountable, that absenteeism to the meetings need to be sent to the Director Daly. I just want to confirm that our absenteeisms have followed that process before we vote.
Trustee Zenata, good question. Let's go to Director Daly. Secretary Daly, could you answer the question of Trustee Zenata?
Absences were confirmed.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Daly, good question, Trustee Zenata. So we were taking a motion to excuse, should we do a recorded vote, or just all in favor, or all opposed?
Sorry, Chair, Chair Duarte, I have a question, actually, just to follow up with Trustee Zenata's question.
Okay, Trustee Guzzo, go ahead.
Thank you. In regards to absences, how many absences are actually allowed per school year for trustee?
Trustee, sorry, Secretary Daly, I'm not sure if we have anything like that, but anything that comes to?
I can check, I think it's three consecutive absences that have not been approved by the Board.
Okay.
But I'll double-check that, and I'll send it to trustees.
Thank you, Secretary Daly. Trustee O'Brien? Sorry, yeah, Trustee O'Brien, go ahead.
I can only tell you what the Education Act says, it does say that every trustee must attend for four meetings a year. That's all I know.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Swan, do you have something to say? Trustee?
Oh, no, through you, Mr. Chair, I didn't actually have anything to say. I was just thinking that the absences were for, like, that it would be for unexcused staff and absences.
Okay, so Secretary Daly will dig the information and pass it on to all the trustees. So can we take a vote to excuse trustees who are not present? Although, although a recorded vote. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Bamra?
In favor.
Trustee Zenata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Kertau?
In favor.
Okay, item, moving on to item number 10, adjournment and closing prayer. Trustee Murphy, I hope you have a good prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you know me, I always have a good prayer. So we're going to do my favorite, one of my favorites, which is, which is the Hail Mary, but we're going to spice it up a little, and we're going to do the glory be right after the Hail Mary. So we'll start with the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee, blessed art thou amongst women, and blesses the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death, amen. Glory be to the Father, to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end, amen. In the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit.
Thank you, everybody, excellent meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you did a great job.
Good night, everyone.
I'd like to put a motion forward to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Sorry, motion to adjourn.
Oh, I take that back, your job was mediocre, Chair.
Yeah, sorry, you just lost a star, four star out of five.
Motion to adjourn.
Trustee O'Hern Zenata did, and I seconded it.
Okay, Trustee O'Von Zenata and Trustee Guzzo. Thank you, everybody, good night.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.